Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorick is excused and Alderman Dukniak will be arriving late. Alderman Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Could we all please, before we do the pledge, could we just take a moment of silence for those that we lost out in Las Vegas this weekend? Thank you. And now Ron, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes. Has everybody had a chance to go through the minutes? Are there any corrections, comments?
At least they can wait on it.
If none, a motion?
Yeah, we'll move to approved minutes of September 19th, 2017.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
That's okay. Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Yeah, we did. First on the agenda, we have consideration of resolution number 11850090517 approving a certified survey map for Wesley Schaefer for the properties at 3607 East Fitzsimmon Road and 10028 South Hillview Road. Little explanation as to this one as we go forward. Catherine, would you like to fill us in on that? Or Melissa? Are you aware of this one? If not, I can brief you on it. Okay. Doug?
Thank you. The CSM was held to this date by the council. At the last council meeting, the applicant had suggested that he did not intend to pursue recording the map, given the time constraints that were involved with a possible wetland delineation on the property. He has since confirmed this, that he does not intend to pursue the CSM. Obviously, this does, having come back to the council, it does need to be some action taken on it. So with that, I believe the correct action would be to file?
Given the applicant's withdrawal of the CSM, it would be a motion to file the resolution as stated on the agenda with that number.
Is there any questions from council regarding how this all came about? Seeing none, motion to file?
I'm going to make a motion to file resolution number 11850.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of resolution 11859100317, a resolution approving and directing the execution of an inter-agency agreement between Oak Creek Health Department and the Oak Creek Inspection Department regarding the administration of certain responsibilities under the agent contracts with the state. Andrew?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I can address this one. As you know, at your September 3 meeting, we looked at and discussed and approved, I guess for lack of a better term, a reorganization of the city's health department. And one of the lingering responsibilities to effect that reorganization was entering into an inter-agency agreement between the Oak Creek Health Department and the Oak Creek Inspections Department related to certain functions and responsibilities of the sanitarium in which we will be housing and will be reporting to the inspections Department supervisor. So with the approvals of the Department of Safety and Professional Services, as well as DAT cap, ag trade, and consumer protection, which are included in your packet, we can effect that change with the approval of the resolution for the inter-agency agreement this evening.
Thank you. Any questions from council? None? Okay. With that, motion? Kowski, make a motion to adopt resolution number 11859-100317, a resolution approving and directing the execution of an inter-agency agreement by and between the Oak Creek Health Department and the Oak Creek Inspection Department regarding administration of certain responsibilities under agent contracts with the state.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's appointments of James D. Potter to fill the board of review. Any questions concerning Mr. Potter's application?
He's willing to serve on this one, we'll take him, right?
Okay. If not, motion, please.
We'll move to concur with the mayor's appointment of James D. Potter, 10656 South Hall Avenue, to a five-year term on the board of review, expiring five May of 2021.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item seven is our vendor summary report. Any questions? We have Bridget here to answer.
Bridget, do you, I know Mike's not here tonight, but you or Doug might know how close are we to completing that playground at work at Lake Vista?
I don't have a definite date, but it's been relayed to me in the meetings I've attended, that the playground is substantially complete and will certainly be completed within this fall, although there's no, at this point in time, there's still earthwork that's going on, it's still an active construction site, so it probably will not be available to the public until the spring of '18, or the late spring, early summer of '18.
Playground itself will be completed this fall.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No more questions? Motion?
We'll move to approve the vendor summary report in the amount of $1,341,609.97.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
That moves us on to Streets, Parks, and Forestry. It's consideration of resolution number 11856100317 authorizing the submittal of an application for the 2018 Department of Natural Resources Urban Forestry Grant Program. Rebecca, are you here to fill us in on that?
How's that? Okay. Well, it has, you know, yet to pass through the DNR, so it's possible that they won't fund this request, but it has four components, and there's one in particular that I'm interested in pursuing either way. There is less than 1% of oak savanna from the original vegetation of the United States remaining, so there's been some encouragement in the Midwest to replenish that. So one of the aspects of our grant is to reforest an area that is the Prairie Pond on South Shepherd. You familiar with that? I think it's in your area, Ken. But some residents haven't been happy with the way it looks, and we have some improvements in mind, so that would be kind of an interesting project and not very expensive to implement. A lot of this grant, as most of the grants that I write, are based on reclamation of We want to do a little stream bank reforestation, that's something I'm looking into, and they're finally starting to talk about it locally with all the ash trees dying and dead on the rivers. We're bound to have some problems in the future. So anything we can get out of those regions and reforest with seedlings is, that's a long-term goal for us. It would be nice to work with other government levels, work on other areas of the rivers that are not within the city bounds. And then we have some Emerald Ash Borer treatments and some South Branch Industrial Park street trees, just 50, starting with, so.
Questions?
Rebecca, how many trees or ashes are we still treating right now?
We have them split into three years, they're on a three-year cycle, so every year we treat about 120 to 150.
And those are still, you have to maintain that, or they'll eventually be succumb?
We're constantly reducing the number and the size, so this is to keep a canopy until we can get something of a substantial size on the streets.
Has the treatment's been successful?
They usually are, I'd say about 90%. When large branches start to die, and I won't go into the biology of it, but there are reasons that the chemical can't move around in certain trees, and so when the large branches start to die, or if the tree gets above 24-inch diameter, it's more expensive to treat, so we've been taking out the largest and the ones with the problems.
Rebecca, so I see the grants is for maximum half of our potential spending. Where are we budgeting the other potential 35,000 roughly from?
This is actually mostly labor, and we have the treatments in a line item for forestry.
Okay, so this would be regular, ongoing spending that we're already doing and potentially getting some back payments from the state?
Right. Trees aren't, we probably wouldn't be planting in South Branch Industrial Park if we don't get the grant.
Anything else? Okay. Motion?
We'll move to per resolution 11856-100317 authorizing the middle of an application for the 2018 Department of Natural Resources Urban Forestry Grant Program.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Me, sorry? Yes, aye.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
She said something else. Yes, yes, aye. I'll go again. So is the council president?
Why are we a lot? Thank you very much, Rebecca, and good luck with that, it'll be worthwhile. Next, informational, summarized treasurer's report on investment and banking accounts for the month ending August 31st, 2017. We have Barb with us tonight.
Just my normal monthly report, just showing you the beginning and ending balances for all of the city accounts. Ending balance, $37,971,526.84. As you can see, tax collections have really slowed down. We're done collecting at the end of July 31st, other than a few, you know, straggles that come in with postmarks. So you'll see that balance continue to go down till we get our aids in November.
I think you're getting off pretty easy.
Well, on this one, I have two more.
Item 10, consideration of motion to approve the renewal in the current institutional agency and custodial agreements with Marshall Ilseley MNI Bank, BMO, under which it delegates its investment authority for the period January 1, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2018, and to authorize the appropriate city officials to execute such agreements. Barb?
Just a little history, we entered into an agreement with BMO, which was MNI at the time, they still can go by that name, back in August of 2006, and so we've been working under this same agreement since then. There's something in the statutes, though, that says that the council should, or the governing board should renew annually the investment agreement under which it delegates its investment authority and reviews annually the performance of the institution with which its funds are invested. Now, we've been doing, we've been reviewing them annually, finance committees since they've been reinstated have been looking at them annually at least. BMO comes in and goes through them at least once a year, but what the piece was missing was council actually renew, basically renewing the contract. It really doesn't change anything, the way we're doing business with them, it's just a formality that you get a chance to look at the agreements and make sure that you're still happy with their service. I've attached all the original agreements to your report, I've attached the fee schedules, and then I've also attached the last three years of investment reporting that I do, just to kind of give you a rough idea. So I guess, and finance committee approved to recommend that council approves this. That's about it. Anything, Bridget?
The fees haven't changed, I mean, you know, the fee schedule that you're looking at is the current fee schedule, and the reason why you're only seeing BMO versus our other investment entities is because BMO has what they statutes call discretionary power, so they have the ability to invest our funds based upon our policy. You won't see this with any of our other advisors coming forward. I knew there was something else I was gonna say. I know. No, that's okay.
And you've obviously had no problems using BMO in the past, so it's pretty much standard procedure.
Yep, and this will be, I'm making it a calendar year agreement, just to make it a little easier, so you'll see it again next year, probably around this time.
Questions, council? Nothing? Okay, motion?
We'll move to approve the renewal of the current institutional agency and custodial agreements with Marshall Ilseley MNI Bank, BMO Harris Bank, under which it delegates its investment authority for the period of January 1, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2018, and to authorize the appropriate city officials to execute such agreement.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Next, for the treasurer, we have consideration of a motion to designate Tri-City National Bank as the city's depository for banking services, as signed and dated on August 24th, 2017, and the request for proposals submitted by Tri-City National Bank for a three-year period with an option to renew for two additional three-year periods, and authorize the appropriate city official to execute such contract agreements effective November 15th, 2017. Barb?
Okay. Last time we went out for RFP for banking services was in 2008. The contract does expire November 15th of 2017, so we've already done the two, three-year extensions, which were brought to you for approval. And so we went out for bid on July 21st, and we sent it out to all the banks we could possibly find. I had several people helping me, just to make sure we covered them all, Bridget, Catherine, Corinne, and we think we covered them all. 16 was pretty many. We received three responsive bids, and they were opened by Krista and I, Krista Miller and I, together, and then we had looked at them, Karen from finance, and trying to remember now what all the steps were, Catherine and I went through them all, and we all determined, you can see on the, there's a spreadsheet with your report that gives all the individual pricing, and so on page three of that, it gives you basically the net gain or loss, or gain or cost that we would have, and clearly Tri-City Bank was at the top of the list. And, so just to tell you those numbers, Associated Bank would have been a gain of about $32,000, Tri-City Bank about $60,000, and Waterstone Bank about $28,000. So that would be over fees, what we would earn in interest. These are estimates based on numbers that we've provided from previous years. And then attached to there is just some other pages that they had to fill out, based on the compensating balance, the way that they would figure that, and then some other comparisons on the services that they provide. We've been using Tri-City Bank since long before I was here, they've done a really good job, and they've worked with us really hard to help things become more efficient and done electronically, saves us a lot of time in the end, so finance committee also looked at this and is approved to recommend this to council as well.
Great, that's quite a difference, too. That's quite a spread there. And again, the continuity really helps retaining Tri-City, so it's probably a plus there. Don't have a learning curve. Anyone else? Ken?
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Yeah, Barb and the clerks and the finance and treasurer's office ran, I think, a really robust program here to put this out here for a rebid. We discussed these last, both these last two items at our finance committee meeting, and I think it was a very thorough process, and it's nice to see a local institution actually step up and work very closely with our staff to make this happen, so we appreciate Tri-City's robust bid, and we're happy to have them as our, as our redesigny as our depository institution.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, motion?
We'll move to designate Tri-City National Bank as the city's depository for banking services, as signed and dated August 24th, 2017, and the request for proposals submitted by Tri-City National Bank for a three-year period with the option to renew for two additional three-year periods, and to authorize the appropriate city officials to execute such contract agreement effective November 15th, 2017.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Brings us to community development and consideration of resolution number 11857100317 approving a bus shelter easement with the city of Oak Creek and 1 West Drexel at 120 West Town Square Way. Doug?
Thank you. As part of the development of Drexel Town Square, the city worked with Milwaukee County Transit System to establish a reroute bus service to serve Drexel Town Square, and as part of that, did invest in two bus shelters, one of which is on Sixth Street by the freighter development, the second of which is along Town Square Way, adjacent to Meyer. However, the shelters, which are typically in the right-of-way, this particular shelter encroached upon Lot 7 of Drexel Town Square, which is the open lot, that's actually under contract right now, just north of the Meyer Gas Station, and as part of the Ulta survey done as part of the due diligence work for the sale of the parcel, identified an encroachment of that bus shelter. This provides an easement for that encroachment, and the terms of the city would still be responsible for maintenance, it just essentially just allows that shelter to remain in place within us having to relocate it off the property.
Are we in maintenance perpetually on that, or does the county step in at some point?
No, the shelters are our responsibility.
Ours? At any given point in time, if they need replacement, do we renegotiate? Or is it our discretion to put them back in?
You certainly can try that. I would suggest, however, that given that this, I mean, the agreement, and I'm not sure what even form the agreement took, but the shelters themselves were funded through DTS, and I suspect that any replacement costs would be funded through DTS as well.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Gail, you have something?
Well, just welcoming Rich to the meeting.
Oh, hey, Rich. Anybody else? No? Okay. Yes, please, Arden, come on.
Arden Dugner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I was at the UW campus, and I was in a...
Hang on, you know, you gotta be on the mic, you've been here before.
I feel that if the city is going to construct a bus shelter, it should be indicated somewhere there, if nothing else, a logo to indicate the fact that we're at Drexel Town Square. Just give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's actually a very interesting idea, to maybe logo it on the glass, the DTS emblem. I don't know if we could get that done, Doug, or is that something we have to go through?
I won't find out. I think that's easily to rule.
I think that's a very good idea. Thank you. Motion?
We'll move to approve resolution 11857-100317 approving a bus shelter easement with the city of Oak Creek and 1 West Drexel at 120 West Town Square Way.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Item 13, consideration of resolution 11858100317 approving a certified survey map for the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utilities at 9175 9235 9325 South Fifth Avenue and 3975 East American Avenue. And with us to help sort this out is Ron.
Ron Pritzlaff, Oak Creek Water and Sewer, thank you for having me. This process began in 2014, where we began the design process of about a $30 million treatment plant improvement project. Throughout that process, we needed to, or at least in order to construct the project, we need to get approval from the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. We have not gotten that to date, so we've been bogged down in some regulatory affairs with them, and previously, when I came back and got all these approved, they have since expired, so the certified survey map and conditional use have expired, it's been a year and a half. I'm coming back to you folks, asking for the CSM to be approved. The CSM basically combines the properties to the north of the existing treatment plant property that you know of now, and the reason why we're going that route is we've got a new intermediate pump station, 2 million gallon reservoir, and high-life pump station that are going to be placed on that portion of the property. So this, the CSM combines that, so we can place those on the property, and, you know, hopefully tomorrow we'll receive our PSC approval to construct, and we can move forward with the project. But this is a critical piece to allow us to construct the project.
Great. Questions for Ron?
Ron, can you just share with the rest of the council what exactly is happening tomorrow?
Pardon?
Can you just share with the rest of the council what exactly is happening tomorrow?
So tomorrow, the PSC commissioners are meeting at, you know, they schedule meetings intermittently, depending on what, how much items, how many items they're dealing with. So at this meeting, there will be, we have gone through the entire process of testimony, rebuttal, all that, all those things that are required of a utility in a Public Service Commission hearing. All that information has gone to the PSC commissioners, and they will render a decision tomorrow on whether or not we can construct a project. So it's an important meeting tomorrow, this just happens to be, this just happens to be one step along the way, but a very important, very important meeting tomorrow.
Good. Questions? You expect opposition, or? I mean, from the PSC, I mean...
We've got three years of opposition, unfortunately.
I can tell you that we have complied with everything that the PSC has requested of us in the case. There has been some things that have muddied the waters along the way, but it's just part of the process. As you know, Franklin has, well, you may not know, Franklin has contested, as is their right, to our ability to construct this project, and they've brought a number of things into the equation. However, after our first, after we were denied the first time, we did comply with all of their, all of their suggestions and all of their requirements, so, and there are three criteria that they do look at in determining whether they're going to construct. The criteria are very vague, offer a lot of latitude to the Public Service Commissioners, so it's very difficult to determine whether or not we're going to receive. I would like to think we are, I'm optimistic that we will, but I'm cautiously optimistic.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? We'll look for a motion.
One will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11858, approving a certified survey map for the properties at 9175, 9235, and 9325, South Fifth Avenue, 3975, East American Avenue.
Kirkowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
License Committee, I will turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The License Committee met on September 27, 2017. Minutes are attached. Recommendations are as follows. Item 14, Kirkowski will make a motion to deny a transient merchant solicitor license to David M. Dufek, 3250 South Pinewood Creek Court, New Berlin, on behalf of Sidix Home Improvement Zone for falsification by omission.
Gail, a second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 15, the following items were received after License Committee met. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 15, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 11 individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received.
Gail, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Item 16, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a transient merchant solicitor license to Dallas D. Burnell, selling home improvement products on behalf of Sidix Home Improvement Zone. Favorable background report received.
Gail, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 17, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a change of premise to the 2017, 2018 Reserve Class B Combination License granted to Mark Biancini, CUB DTS LLC, DBA Cuba Nidas, 7973, South Main Street, to include an extension of premise into Drexel Town Square for the following events, Fall Festival, October 21st, and Winter Festival, February 17, 2018.
Gail, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 18, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer license to Angela Wines, agent on behalf of the Oak Creek Lions Club, for a bike MS, throw MS in the hole event to be held at Fuel Fitness LLC, 440 West Rossin Avenue, Oak Creek, on Saturday, October 21st, 2017.
Gail, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
We will now consider a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E, to consider proposed term sheet, including a TIF incentive grant between HSA Acquisitions, Inc. and the City of Oak Creek regarding property at 610 West Rossin Avenue and 7001 South Sixth Street and 7045 South Sixth Street. Item B, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent G, to consider the notice of claim filed by Barbara Stam regarding injuries sustained on May 11th, 2016, near the intersection of Wood Creek Drive and Sunnyview Drive. Item C, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E, to discuss negotiating strategy with respect to outstanding issues related to the closing and the sale of the property at 8,000 South Market Street to the Waters Living Senior Holding LLC pursuant to the land purchase agreement.
Counsel, President Gale?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale will move to consider, Gale will move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to consider a proposed term sheet, including a TIF incentive grant between HSA Acquisitions, Inc. and the City of Oak Creek regarding the property at 610 West Rossin Avenue, 7,001 South Sixth Street, and 7,0045 South Sixth Street. B, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, to consider the notice of claim filed by Barbara Stam regarding an injury sustained on May 11th, 2016, near the intersection of Wood Creek Drive and Sunnyview Drive. And C, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to discuss negotiating strategy with respect to outstanding issues related to the closing on the sale of the property at 8,000 South Market Street to the Waters Senior Living Holdings LLC pursuant to the land purchase agreement.
Gail, second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Thank you. We will now convene in the closed session.
Make a motion, we can do no petition.
Gail, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here. Aye. Aye. It's been a long night.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
We will now entertain a motion. Would you like a city attorney to phrase it for us?
We have actually two of them we have to do.
Yeah. Come through with the first one, Ken?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Gale will move to deny notice of claim filed by Barbara Stam regarding an injury sustained in March, May 11th, 2016, near the intersection of Wood Creek Drive and Sunnyview Drive.
And authorize the issuance of a notice of disallowance of the claim?
So noted in my motion.
Gail, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 22, consideration of resolution number 11860100317, a resolution approving Second Amendment to the Land Purchase Agreement with the Waters Senior Living Holdings LLC.
I don't have it in front of me.
You want to state it, Melissa?
I think Ken should. Melissa can state it, then I'll just.
Oh, okay.
Cleans it up, Rich. Easier that way.
As to item 22, it is a motion to adopt resolution number 11860100317, a resolution approving a Second Amendment to the Land Purchase Agreement with the Waters Senior Living Holdings LLC.
We'll move as noted by the city attorney.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.